Call the B and let's see, call the meeting to order. If you'll all stand for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Remember this state that Craig is excused tonight?
Sorry?
Remember the state that Craig is excused?
Oh, right. All right. So first, I'll say that Craig is excused tonight and I am standing in for him. And I will entertain the movement to approve the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda.
Any discussion? Okay. So, all four signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Okay. Public comments on agenda items. I didn't have anything here. But does anybody? Going once, going twice? Okay. This is our speaker.
Okay.
Okay. And then board member comments. Let's start at the end down there.
I've been working a little on my student roundtable project. I met with principals and the counselors last Monday. They're gonna give me a list of randomized students by Tuesday and I'm still waiting for the list, so that's coming.
By this coming Tuesday?
No, by last Tuesday.
Oh.
So it's coming, hopefully. And at the high school, we're busy working on Tolo, getting Tolo ready.
Okay, how exciting.
Are we still calling it Tolo?
We weren't going to, but now we are again.
Oh, okay.
What, did you guys choose something else to call it and then come back to something else?
We were told we weren't supposed to use the name and they printed the tickets with the name on it, so.
Oh.
That's what we're going with.
Next year.
Okay, don't have a whole lot to report, other than it relates here, even though it sounds like it's not. But the Girl Scouts who I work for just yesterday took my computer away, gave me a brand-new one. And of course, I had thought that they were going to swap and transfer the data from one to the next. No.
How naive.
They had told me to put everything on somewhere else and I put it on an external hard drive, so I have most of it all, except for some other stuff that I didn't think about. But they had wanted it all to go onto the cloud and to a server in Seattle where it's the Girl Scout server. And that's the big problem. But see, this is the same as I have with the school district computer. Is the internet connection at Camp McCloud. I have satellite and I have DSL, but the internet connection either way is down in the toilet. In any event. And I'm trying to get, I haven't been able to get email because of this internet connection, or maybe it's the school district computer now, but it won't give me email for the school district computer. So I haven't been able to catch up onto it. However, I did have it figured out because I think the school district tech people did put a separate thing. I can load up the computer and I have one direct link before getting into any of the email stuff that gets me to the agenda. And so I'm able to work on the agenda, even if I could have 75 people from the community sending me emails who are all mad at me and want to cut my throat and all that sort of stuff. I just don't know and that's probably just as well. So anyway, that's what's going on with me. Otherwise, school district-wise, I have had, well, I will say, one person specifically, but a second person brought it up too, regarding the graduation. And you've probably heard much more, is that people are still upset over the graduation happening here and worried about it. And I haven't had anybody come to me and say they're happy about it. Just the two people, one very adamant, who are very worried about it and, you know, most of it is, why does it have to happen when my kid's graduating?
Well, our student leaders have written a letter, it'll be in our newsletter, explaining their decision and that yes, there are plenty of seats for everyone.
Right. This one person who's very adamant is, well, I've got 32 people that are coming. This was not a student, this was the mom. Thirty-two people coming and we're only getting eight tickets. And I tried to explain, well, you know, the part of the process is, you know, we know that there's gonna be some students who don't use the eight tickets. And, you know, so there's gonna be a process of being able to work it out and whatever. And I couldn't remember what our attendance last year was, but that you had explained to me that it all fits here anyway, so.
Yeah. Our attendance last year was under 1,500 roughly. And when the students and the school administrators set it up and to do a dry run, there were over 1,900 seats in the gym, so we should be fine.
Right.
That's great.
Yeah.
I'm all game for, let's try it this year and hopefully. And I also explained to that person how we're trying to focus on also creating new traditions that are ours, as opposed to from Silverdale, or sort of thing like that. And that gives us a chance and it gives Spencer and his group and his, you know, pals and buddies and everyone else a chance to really make something go that's really uniquely ours. And I'm excited about that. In any case, I think that's enough for my report. It's John's turn.
Well, mine has been mainly concerned with legislative affairs. As you know, I'm the board legislative rep. And I'm also on the state legislative committee that sort of sets the agenda. And everything is focused on our day on the hill, which is coming up on the 29th of this month, the last Monday of this month. And if any of you, just having said that much, if any of you would like to come with us, we have appointments with Senator Sheldon at 1:30, McEwen at, oh, looks like the same time, and Griffey, oh, McEwen and Griffey it looks like at 3:30. And then I've, because of my position, I've had to make appointments for other people in other districts in District Four. And so I'm kind of like a half bishop with a bunch of congregations spread out from here to the coast. And so I've been contacting various people for that. But I would urge for our listening public, viewing public, as well as any of you, if you just want to show up on the 29th at the times I've announced or check with me as we go along. And that'd be on the last Monday of the month. The first appointment we have for our local folks is at 1:30 with Senator Sheldon. And so that will be at his office in the Capitol Building. But I can, we can deal with that later. So, we've got those to deal with. So the main focus has been on these two days. There's gonna be a legislative conference, which is so well subscribed that it's closed now on the 28th for legislative representatives and those that assigned. And then our day on the hill, when we go and see various of our legislative people, either senators in the case of Mr. Sheldon, or our representatives in the case of Griffey and McEwen. I, thanks to Dana, I forwarded to all you folks the latest information on where the legislative process is and what bills are coming up. And I just sent to Dana this evening, I got it just minutes before I left, a bill that's coming up on regionalization, which is basically the hot-button issue for us. And it was the leadership constantly on that because I made quite a noise about that at our last meeting. And so if we can get that addressed, as you know, that's what costs us about $10,000 a year less in what we can offer for our teacher salary than other districts around, basically making us a farm team. And that is unjust and it has a snowball effect because then other programs are contingent on what we get for that, and so we need to have that changed. We're not imputing any bad motives to anyone. We recognize legislation is a difficult process, but certain things in our new appliances do not work. And we'd like to have this fixed. So I think that is, in a nutshell, what I've been doing and what is coming up in the near future.
Thank you. Very thorough. I have just been at home dealing with, I have hernias that I'm dealing with and I won't go into detail, but looking forward to insurance being, having a heart and giving me my surgery, so that's it for me.
I really can't follow those two guys down there. But I really encourage John to represent us well at the legislative conference and I'm glad to hear that our student representative will be attending as well. I think the student voice is really, really important for the legislature to hear.
Hear, hear.
They're making decisions without looking at the product that's impacted. So I'm hoping that Dana and you and Spencer will be able to push forward our agenda.
I just want to add to that, Laura, if I might, we were very privileged last year to have two student board representatives with us on each of our calls. And I'm sure that Spencer will represent us equally well this year.
That's great. You said that was September?
No.
This is, this is this month.
Oh, this month, okay. I was looking at your paper, so I'm, should not look at your paper. Okay.
The last month, well, last Monday of this month.
If I may interject a minor comment of slight levity. Laura mentioned that she didn't, she couldn't follow us. Normally she leads us.
Well, we all knew that, so. Well, and we're moving on to the Hood Canal and Pioneer School District Plan proposal. And Mr. Marty Brewer from the, he the Pioneer Superintendent. All right, is here to present for us some information.
Thank you for the opportunity, I appreciate it.
You can hand it over.
Where is it that I can present from the podium?
Unless you're more comfortable somewhere else, we'll be relaxed.
They'll follow you around.
Are you wired or can you hear me?
Or right to the podium?
We can hear you.
Well, I do appreciate the opportunity. Sean Badstone, the Superintendent with the Hood Canal School District could not be with us tonight because he's out presenting this material to some of his constituents. So Pioneer and Hood Canal School Districts have put a joint resolution on the ballot for February 13th of 2018. This conversation for us began about a little over a year ago, when we found out that the Sheldon School District had put a bond on the ballot. And you know, as non-high school districts, we have capital responsibilities for high school districts. And so when we found out in November of 2016 that there was going to be a bond on the ballot, we started to have conversation and dialogue about what's possible in our communities. And so the work that I'm about to present to you tonight has been, you know, well over a year and thought processes between our two districts. So the timeline that's presented to you on page number two, we really, the most important piece, I'm gonna make this a very quick presentation tonight to keep you folks moving quickly, but the very, the most important piece there is, last spring, we felt it important between the 10 board members and the two superintendents that we go out and poll our constituents around, what is it that, how would you like us to respond? And so we asked a very simple question, how do you want us to respond? And we had three solutions. One was keep doing what we're doing, which is basically paying non-high annual fees and paying any capital fees that apply to us. Two was annexation. We felt it was very important for our tax base to understand that is a viable option and what are the complications around that. And three was build your own high school. And so we went out and started to gather information on that very question. And shockingly, from the Pioneer School District, as you know, as a neighboring district, we've had our challenges passing bonds in our district. In fact, 17 years and 14 failures before we just, you know, finished the work that we did at our middle school and our elementary schools. So, you know, I was shocked, if we go to the next slide, that the results came back for our survey significantly higher than I would have anticipated. We had 833 responses between our two districts. That was in-person and online responses. And of that, 72% of the people that spent that time taking that survey or hearing our presentation last spring stated, or excuse me, pursue a high school. And so that really started to guide our work, which was in May and June of last calendar year. Next slide. So our boards put Sean Badstone and myself to task around, if we're going to build a high school, we need to have an innovative high school, one of which has its own components that, you know, maybe set itself apart from all of the high schools in the state of Washington or Mason County. And so we started to research what was possible there and learn as much as we could about the current programs of Mason County and beyond. We targeted then this concept of streams. And everybody's heard of STEM, but we want to add the reading component to that, the arts component to that, and most importantly, the service component to the high school, to the high school experience. We also want to, recognizing the good work of North Mason and your STEM opportunities and Sheldon and their STEM opportunities, we really wanted to set ourselves apart with what our pathway could be. And what, as we were talking to business leaders in our community, what really resonated with us is this opportunity around our industry. And so we really wanted to start honing in on aquaculture and the forest industry, to prepare students to work, be work-ready in those fields and/or college-ready in those fields. And so our work is really going to be built upon these pathways that are possible in a 24-credit comprehensive high school where students can learn more about the field of aquaculture. And when I say aquaculture, it's not the gooey duck farms. It's, it's working with water. It's the importance of water in our communities, whether that be septic design and monitoring, whether it be water tables, whether it be salmon runs. I mean, this is the type of concept that we believe we can create for kids that have that natural levitation towards that field. That, you know, then if they graduate, they're work-ready. They could go right to work for the Taylor shellfishes of the world and/or, you know, the salmon industry. Or if they wanted to go to a four-year institution, the coursework they've taken is college-eligible. That's a key part of what we believe and what we want to be able to apply to our students. Project-based learning is an important part of that and dual-credit opportunities with two- and four-year opportunities beyond high school. Next slide, comprehensive. A big question that we get in our community is, would this be a comprehensive high school? The answer is absolutely yes. We have opportunities in the industries that I just mentioned, but, you know, there will also be that just regular path to go through high school, you know, where I can meet the 24-credit requirements. Seventeen core classes, three personalized learning pathways, and four electives. Extracurricular activities. Would there be extracurricular activities in this high school? The answer is absolutely yes. That's a deal breaker for our community. I mean, if we couldn't offer extracurricular activities, it would not go. And finally, co-curricular, absolutely banned, drama, choir. And I'm gonna get into that a little more detail on the next slide. So the next slide really sums it up. The key question coming out of our communities has been, so you think you're large enough to run a high school, can you compete? You know, are you large enough to generate the revenue necessary to offer a variety of program? And the answer is absolutely yes. And this demonstrates that. Sizing it up, and what we did was, I did a, I collected some information on all the high schools in the state of Washington. And there are 384 high schools in the state of Washington that participate in WIAA activities. And of that 384, I've outlined the difference between the high and the low. The very low, the small tree is the smallest high school in the state of Washington that operates in WIAA classification. It's Oaksdale and has 27 students. The largest school in our state is South Kitsap with 2,024 students in their nine-through-12, or nine-through-11 grades. This school, between our two districts, our 374 non-high kids that come out of Pioneer, 374, and the 150 from Hood Canal would combine for approximately an enrollment of 550 students, if every child, you know, chose to stay with our, with our districts. So between five and 550 students, where does that put it in that, in that ranking of 1 to 384? Well, it puts you right almost exactly at the 50th percentile. Not quite. If you're a math major, it's the 47th percentile. But it's 203 out of 384 schools. So, you know, the reason why I sum that up is, I'm trying to, with our community, alleviate this concern that this school would not have enough FTE to generate the revenue necessary to offer a wide range of programs. And that's absolutely not the case because most funding mechanisms that the state creates are geared towards the average, geared towards that 40th to 60th percentile-type schooling. Next slide speaks about the cooperative. Why cooperative? I get asked the question a lot around cooperative and why would we partner with Hood Canal School District? Well, first, Hood Canal and Pioneer both feed into primarily Sheldon. We send about 27 students to you, not about, exactly 27 this year. Most of our students go to Sheldon High School and almost all of Hood Canal students go to Sheldon High School. So we did our research and found a provision in the law that allows for a non-high district to go through a process up to two years to determine their future, responding to a high school district and their capital needs. And so we started this dialogue and determined that alone, we may not be able to build a high school that could meet all of the demands of 21st-century learning. On the Pioneer side, I feel like we have the FTE to be able to offer a wide range of programs with 374 high school students. Hood Canal could not do that. But how Hood Canal really helps our district is they can partner with us to help burden or share the cost of a very expensive building. As you know, high schools are not cheap. And so the partnership, I call it kind of, it's kind of a marriage made in heaven, you know, because we both complement one another, helping us get through a set of problems that we're exposed to today that potentially could give our tax base long-term solutions. And so we envision building a high school for, you know, between $60 and $70 million. We got that number by way of our cost estimator, as well as a cost comparison on the work that you did here in North Mason in 2013. We envision 100,000 square-foot facility with a capacity of 750 students. How we get to the $70 million or the $60 to $70 million is Pioneer's put a ballot, or a resolution on the ballot for $30 million. Hood Canal's done the same. And we anticipate between $5 and $10 million a state match. We think we can maximize state match because there is a provision in the law that when you have a cooperative effort, you qualify for more state match, up to 90% state matching funds. We're working to secure a site location and you can see on that map, we share a border, the north end of Pioneer, the south end of Hood Canal. We're targeting that area because we feel it makes sense. I mean, if we're gonna have a cooperative effort, we need to cut the travel time from Lilly WAP in the south end of Harstein Island and make sure we have common space. And so we've researched that area. We have a landowner that's willing to have a, to make an agreement with us, but we're not gonna get the cart out ahead of the horse here. We want to make sure that our community wants to validate this effort before we secure the final negotiations for the piece of land. The anticipated revenue, again, with our 550 FTE, we ran the F203X report, which generates $5.6 million of basic debt apportionment, not including Fed, not including local funds, and not including federal funds to operate this high school. So we feel that that's a credible amount of dollars that does not include our local funds that we currently pay to other districts. So our projection is, the money is there without a new tax of our people to operate our own high school because we're already taxing for our high school costs. And finally, you folks know this better than probably I. Mason County is experiencing growth. And we have spent an extraordinary amount of time working with the county and also city officials around the projected growth. We found in the, in the Mason County Comprehensive Plan, they anticipate 20,000 new residents over the next 20 years. Many of those start at the south end of Belfair and work their way down, you know, across the county towards our service districts. And we feel that, you know, with that growth, there's going to be a need on the south end of Mason County, especially at Sheldon High School, where we could alleviate some of that growth expectation in a high school that would be centrally located in Mason County. The next slide speaks to the conceptual drawings. We have hired an architect to help us, you know, with some, you know, very preliminary conceptual drawings. I'm not gonna spend a whole lot of time in that. The next slide articulates how, whether it's gonna cost. Hood Canal School District has a current M&amp;O of $1.72 per thousand. Their current bond, which expires for their building in 2021, is 79 cents. To raise $30 million, they're asking their tax base to consider a $1.36 tax to bring them to an all-in $3.87 cost. Pioneer School District, we have a 209 M&amp;O tax at this point in time. Our current bond is $1.6. We still have about 20 years on that bond. Our cooperative high school to raise $30 million in 30 years is 99 cents per thousand, to bring us an all-in cost of $4.14. We often get asked, how does that compare to the Sheldon School District? And you can see that the Sheldon numbers apply accordingly, which I feel is a key part of, you know, some of the problem we experience now. Sheldon's passage rate of capital improvements well exceed what our communities are willing to offer. And so we really need to look at potentially long-term solutions for our community. And finally, the last page kind of articulates what we feel is a key consideration. We're currently renting space. When you really think about it, when we pay non-high fees and pay for capital improvements, we're investing in neighboring communities and neighboring staffs to educate our students. And that's okay. There's nothing wrong with that model. But if we have a desire to invest a little more money upfront to own and develop and build equity into our own community, there's an opportunity for us to operate a high school between our two service districts that would be, you know, comparable to high schools across the state of Washington. So with that, I will answer any questions, if it's appropriate. Is it appropriate to have it? Any questions you might have?
Well, I don't have a question, but I really, I admire your ambition. This is a huge project to undertake and it concerns two big communities. So, good luck.
Thank you. And it would be, we've asked lots of questions and tried to look at, like, kind of a pathway that, you know, others have blazed for us. And the answer, the response is, this has never been done before. School districts work with cooperatives. Land and Ritzville have a cooperative agreement and they work on high school services together, but they've never gone in to build a school and cooperate. And so that's, you know, it is, it is a challenge. And, you know, we'll see where the chips fall.
And you may become the flagship for all the other small, non-high school districts that want to do the same thing.
Potentially, yeah. We hope that, at least we start the conversation.
You can be a consultant. You'll make a whole bunch of money.
Let's not go. Any other questions? I got it, yeah.
Not so much a question, although maybe there's one in there too, but, a comment. As you heard earlier, I'm a Girl Scout. I work for the Girl Scouts. Well, in Hood Canal District, there is also a Girl Scout camp who has a person who is retiring now, that's gonna be still living there, who was a former board member, board president at Hood Canal School District. He called me about all this stuff about a year ago, or whatever it was. And, you know, he hasn't been on the school board for a while. Actually, Annie, if you know Annie, took his place. And was asking questions because he's been getting community input, so he says, about people concerned and worried about and whatever, you know, mostly about the money and stuff. And I just shared with him just thoughts that I had. And that, one of those thoughts I think is worth bringing to your, to you also, is what it is. And by the way, I'm impressed with what you've, the work you've done here and you and your people have done here. Answered some of the things that I even brought up to this fellow. But in any case, one of them was, what you're doing is, aside from the concept, but just to have a brand-new high school when you haven't had one before, you're gonna have, if you succeed in doing this, you're gonna have a whole lot of growing pains and you're gonna make some missteps and things are not gonna go right, whatever. You know, the things that happen when you do something brand-new. You're gonna make all the mistakes or many of the mistakes and then you'll fix them and that sort of stuff. And I brought that up to him as, that would be something that, you know, he should bring back to, you know, you folks in general. Because, you know, you're gonna make mistakes, even if, you know, if you go through it. And so anyway, that was what I wanted to share, just for your sake. But otherwise, again, I'm very impressed with the work you've done so far. You know, I don't have a problem at all with you guys creating a new high school. Maybe we can play football with you and hopefully each other.
And I forgot to mention, we would actually be a 1A classification. Yeah, we'd fall in that 1A classification. We'd be a large 1A. I think the top end of 1A is near 490 students and we'd have 408 in the top three, in the three grades that they count, so.
Right. We play Sheldon, we're not in their classification every year anyway, but.
You guys are a 2A classification, correct?
We could play.
Oh, yeah. We could schedule a few games. Anything else for that?
I just want to echo the, the presentation you put together and the handouts and everything. They're beautiful. They're beautiful. You did a really good job.
Thank you very much.
It's really great.
Appreciate it.
I'm always encouraged when someone wants to build something. We certainly, it took a lot of history and a lot of effort, and it seems to me it speaks well of you if you can unify two communities to come together to support education.
Yeah, we feel like it's a, you know, our business plan, our business deal could be, you know, really, you think about it, it could be a, you know, like a buy-in building for half the cost. And, you know, that's a pretty decent business plan on our part. But to follow up on the learning curve, the learning curve will absolutely be sharp, and hopefully we can lean on you folks and your leadership, you know, that is impressive down here in North Mason, that we could learn a lot from your experiences as well. A little different circumstance, you know, starting from scratch, but we feel like with the right leadership, we could, in the right direction, we could make it work.
I'd like to bring up, almost a question, that was where the almost a question thing is. Some of what that fellow had talked to me about was you guys potentially creating something different in a high school. And that, to me, was kind of intriguing. What would be different? Well, who knows, because you have to create it still. But one of those potentials that started occurring to me, and I think Dana even talked to me a little bit about this, was, you know, what if you guys created something that draw, would draw kids because of something special you're doing? It's different from Shelton, different from North Mason. And then vice versa, some of your kids who aren't interested in that would then go elsewhere and stuff like that. In other words, a cooperative kind of, how would we, how would something like that be created? Is that something even interested that you guys would be interested in, to do something so that instead of having a high school for a district, we have maybe several high schools for Mason County that all serve all the kids in some fashion or other?
And that, we've come to that as well, recognizing the good work you guys work in, you know, in the IT world and, you know, the computer development, and how Shelton and the healthcare and biotech, and, you know, us doing something, you know, around agriculture. I mean, kids could have, our students could have choices across Mason County to really guide them down the pathway that they desire. And I feel, as I think you feel, you know, choices like that would be great for our kids, and could be a good opportunity for all.
That's great.
Again, to me, that's one of the most persuasive things you've said. I mean, I think that would offer an educational package that would make the whole greater than the parts. And I think it would also, the process you're talking about would certainly raise people's consciousness about education. And I think the people of the state can use some encouragement in that area and be willing to pay for what, after all, is our most important investment, our kids.
Absolutely. Well, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for the opportunity.
All right, on to our consent agenda. I will entertain a motion to approve.
But I have one thing first.
Oh, oh, go.
You have to give me a chance to say thank you to the board.
Oh.
January is Board Appreciation Month, and in honor of that, I would like to share the Governor's proclamation, "We're appreciating our board members." It's a little long, but I would like to read the whole thing.
I guess so.
Once a year, we get this opportunity. So it says, "Whereas the mission of Washington's public school system is to assure that all students achieve at high levels and possess the knowledge and skills to be responsible citizens of a democratic society and enjoy productive and satisfying lives, whereas Washington's 295 locally-elected school boards and nine elected ESDs boards are the core of the public education governance system for our state, and whereas the districts and regions they lead serve more than 1 million students and have a combined annual budget of approximately $15 billion and employ close to 120,000 people, and whereas school directors play a crucial role in promoting student learning and achievement by creating a vision, establishing policies and budgets, and setting clear standards of accountability for all involved, and whereas school directors are directly accountable to the citizens in their districts and regions, serving as a vital link between members of the community and their schools, and whereas school directors and education service districts provide a passionate voice of advocacy for public schools and the welfare of schoolchildren, and whereas it is appropriate to recognize school directors as outstanding volunteers and champions for public education, and nowhere is that more true than in North Mason. Now therefore, I, J. Inslee, Governor of the State of Washington, do hereby proclaim January 2018 as School Board Recognition Month in Washington, and I encourage all people in our state to join me in this special observance. So thank you for all that you are doing for the kids of North Mason."
That's nice. And the honor is all ours. Okay, if there is nothing else, we will move on to the consent agenda. I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Still moved.
Any discussion? Art, are you going to say something?
Not sure yet. Still thinking here. This, of course, the time when, if we have concerns. We had brought, from last month, we brought forward the MOU Child Care Action thing. And of course, Craig, who was the one that really wanted to talk about that, isn't here.
We discussed it one-on-one, though, so.
You did. Okay. So he doesn't have a problem with us?
With it being on the agenda and going forward, no.
I just read through it, and of course, I don't know what it was, what concerns he had, and I didn't raise, it didn't raise any for me. So I had otherwise, no other things to bring up on the consent agenda.
Basically, what that item does is it allows us to participate in a program with our special education preschool, our developmental preschool. Now that they're partnering with Head Start and E-CAP, and they're sharing room space, the Head Start and E-CAP participate in a program that provides a book bag with five books in it that goes home with each child to their family each month to do story time and have common stories and experiences that they're doing at home that they can share in the classroom. This includes our developmental preschool kids in participating in that program, so that they also get to take home a book bag and have the same stories and then work with those when they come back to school.
I love that my son got to do that when he was in preschool with Christ Lutheran, and it was great. It wouldn't, that's really got him sparked on books, so that was pretty neat. All right, so if there is no more discussion, and I'll for, for approving the agenda, I'm sorry, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'll post same sign. Okay, on to board development and linkage to the superintendent update.
Certainly. We'll go straight to the budget, and Ashley Supre will come up and tell you about where we are. First, the budget status report, and then the financials.
Okay, so, wait for this to pop up there. We're going to be presenting on December. What we saw for December overall, December's revenues ended up being lower than budgeted, not by much, but they were slightly lower. Most of this was due to lower grant claims than what would be expected. That always gets made up in future months, though, so it's not anything that could be viewed as a prediction for the future. Expenditures were higher than budgeted, not by a whole lot, but they were, were higher by about $50,000, $60,000. This just happens to do with some of the projects that we've had come down, things breaking, things that you don't necessarily budget for that end up coming out of the checkbook. But when everything's said and done, year-to-date, we're only about $27,000 over budgeted, so it's not a whole lot, and our revenues are $20,000 over budgeted. So they're basically offsetting each other. So we're getting more revenue than we had expected, and our expenditures are a little bit higher, which, if you get more money, you expect to spend more money as well.
I have a little comment. If you can scroll that back to that first graph, this one, right there. I got a little bit confused reading that. Oh, you're already on to this. I figured it out. What it was, was it talked about December, the use in expenses, and the statement there was very clear. But then I'm looking at this, and I'm not remembering to read that it says year-to-date. I'm thinking December, and I'm looking at the thing, so no, no, it doesn't match the statement.
Exactly.
Then when you scroll further down and you look at the graphs, it meets that, and then I had to remember, okay, that says year-to-date. So I just wanted to bring out, there was a little piece of confusion that I had, which, again, I figured it out, so.
Yeah, the graphs themselves, trying to get them formatted to fit on the page, they're too big, and we don't want to make them too small so you can't actually see what's going on. But basically, from that beginning paragraph through the little paragraph that's after the last graph, that's all technically one set of information. If you want me to present it in a different format, I can. I don't mind. We could easily drop that paragraph below so that that's not the first thing you come to. Maybe you come to that after the graphs.
Yeah, I'm not sure I have any suggestions so much as, I got confused. I figured it out, and.
Most months?
You obviously understood the same thing.
Exactly. Most months, you don't notice it, because it's been in that same format for the last couple of years. But most months, you don't notice it because our revenue and expenditure trends are the same as it was for the month. So then you don't see that it's off, but it was opposite this month. So our year-to-date trends were opposite of our month trends. So yes, it, I did a double take as well, and had to go back and read through and make sure that I had put them in the, in the correct location, so. Okay, so, now on to our fund balance. So this is, this might look a tad bit alarming because you're going to look at this, and you're going to see from November to December, did we drop $700,000? No, we did not drop $700,000 technically in the month of December. What ended up happening is, due to an early board meeting month like this, we have to prepare our documents and get it, and get everything ready earlier. Well, the holiday fell on the 15th of the month, which meant we had to run payroll early. So payroll had to be run on the 10th. By the time I'm preparing board documents, payroll, which is retroactive for transportation to the prior month, gets included in all of those numbers because technically it was for December. So what you're going to see is a lower number in December, but you're going to see a higher number in January, because some of that amount of expenditures that offset for December are actually January. So you'll see it pick back up for January. So, but that did, that did look sort of staggering, so I wanted to point out that we did not spend $700,000 in the month of December.
It's still a very healthy fund base.
Yes, it definitely is. So, yeah, we're watching it really, really closely, especially with everything that we have going on currently, making sure that we are staying in a solid position going into next school year. So that is one of our priorities. Our other funds, so our budget status for those, if we want to drop below that graph. Okay, right now, for all of our other funds, we're sitting in a position where things are looking good. Our capital projects, again, you're going to continue to see that decline as the stadium gets completed. That's where you're seeing that drop. Debt service, we made our debt payments in December. That amount will go back up again in June when we receive tax, more taxes. And then ASV, ASV is trending like normal throughout the school year. They tend to go down, go back up. That's exactly what we're seeing. Transportation vehicle, last month I had presented on the fact that the transportation department's looking at getting an engine for a new bus. I talked to the director today down at Transportation, and they do have a quote for $30,000. So we're going to see that $52,000 drop by about 30, and then we'll plan accordingly. We are expecting a depreciation payment in August of about $108,000 as well, so that will pick back up.
That's nice.
So enrollment, this is always a really fun slide for me. Right now, we're, for December, we were looking at 2,194, but when we came back from winter break, we had 12 new high school students.
Wow.
So that's always pleasant. So unfortunately, because of the fact that we came back from winter break on account day, not all of the students were counted, but we're going to see them, we're going to see our enrollment go up past 2,200 in February. So that's, we're definitely trending upwards even still. So that's going to really help when it comes to funding for our increased apportionment this year and into next year as well, when we're going through the budgeting process.
Another little question. So when you said we're going to see it go up in February, does that mean that in February's board meeting, we'll see the January spiked up?
No. What, because January, because they, because the students showed up on count day, we didn't have the time necessary to ensure that they were fully enrolled. Therefore, we couldn't count them technically, even though they were here.
And they're being counted in the district. They're leaving because they haven't sent us the records yet, so we can't both count them.
Yeah.
So from the board meeting perspective, we'll see it in March when the spike is up?
You're going to see it in February, because in the February count, they will be counted because they're going to be here in the beginning of the school month. In January, we don't see them because they're old-school.
So then in the February board meeting, we'll see two new columns?
No, you're just going to see an increase in February. And, well, okay, I see what you're saying. So in your, yes. So what ends up happening is I get the information from Denise after I've prepared your packet. So I have the knowledge of what it's going to be. It's just not in your slide. So I can verbally present where we are at that point. We just won't have like certified numbers in our child count at that time. So you will see, January will likely trend right about where we are currently, and then I'll be able to give you an updated number for where February is.
So the February graph is the one where it will show up visually?
Exactly.
But that won't be logged in?
January will just be a little bit higher, and then February.
We'll know.
Yep, exactly, exactly. So, but right now, we're trending really, really well. And we're trending much better than other school districts. Other school districts and other business managers that I've been talking to, they're losing FTE, and we're gaining.
We're getting their children. That's lovely.
Yeah.
Yeah, good.
It's good for us. So that's good. It helps with our revenues, which is really important right now. So that is something that is really great that's happening right now. 12 new students coming back from winter break at just the high school level is huge.
Well, and by the end of that week, it was up to 15, so.
Yeah. So, do you guys have any questions, comments?
Well, another comment regarding that. That was sort of, sort of the thing we talked about a bunch of times in our board meetings about having a new high school is going to draw kids here. We didn't see it right away, but we are seeing it now, and I think that's what we're seeing. The high school itself is what's drawing kids here.
Are they moving into this area, or are they transferring?
It's a, it's a combination. From what I've seen, it's a combination of both.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
So that means we did our homework right.
Is a high amount of the transfers from South Kids? It?
Is it? Yeah. And that would make sense.
Yeah.
I was just guessing.
It could also be the quality of the teachers that remain here that are not hired away because of our regionalization factor.
Absolutely, in this amazing place and all the amazing people here. Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Perfect. Is there anything else?
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for all your hard work.
Here, here.
And keeping it straight and explaining it to us, so we understand.
Yeah, so teaching and learning, one of the things I want to highlight is tonight was a new thing for us in that we had a secondary conference night that was separate from the elementary school, and that was specifically planned to coincide with the middle of the second trimester. So, because that's been a concern at the, for example, at the high school, if we really want to focus on helping kids be successful, but we don't get any face-to-face time with their parents, because, you know, the older they get, the harder it gets, that's planned, like conferences in the middle of the year, that, that's another issue we needed to solve. So they had their first night of parent conferences during second trimester, so that if kids are struggling, the parents and the teachers have an opportunity to talk, and with the student there usually to help make a plan for better success. Turnout's been pretty good. It's a little, you know, not as high as in the fall, but it is the first time they've done this, and even though, you know, they sent out required reminder phone calls, I know I got one, they expect that to continue to grow. And I was up there for about an hour this evening, and there wasn't a teacher that was sitting there without somebody to talk to for very long. So it was, it was really good, and they're very excited and pleased with how that's turning out.
So I imagine the middle school then had a very good turnout.
Middle school had, they did. You could see all the cars out here, and that was before time for the wrestling match. So tonight, we had conferences and conferences and a board meeting and a varsity wrestling match, filling up all our parking spaces. So that was good. Also, tomorrow's another day that we're meeting with the particularly secondary math team. We've recently done all the work to do the math, change in the math program K8, and we are, though, adopted, the last time we did a math adoption, we didn't. and we are though adopted, the last time we did a math adoption, we didn't do one for the high school credit courses, algebra, geometry, et cetera. We stayed with what we had because the year that you were looking at that, we was in the transition with state standards and there was a strong feeling among our teachers and staff that the materials publishers had yet to figure out that they needed to change some things. They didn't want to buy things that wouldn't meet standards. They would, and so they've been spending a lot of time adapting to effectively meet their students' needs. So they're very excited right now. Tomorrow afternoon, because of the high school having then, in the middle school, no kids in the afternoon to do some work because they had conferences. They are meeting and they're at the stage of taking a look at a variety of things that are available and narrowing it down to some things that they want to try and have kids try and share with the community before they start to get ready to make some recommendations to the board, so it's very exciting. Looking at some really cool material sets and I'm being very careful, I'm not saying books because there are still books involved, but that may or may not be the kinds of materials that we select. There may or may not be paper that kids handle every day, at least in the traditional way. And so it's kind of exciting for them and it's certainly going to be cool for kids. I know it was interesting, I was down in Lisa's classroom flipping through all the materials that they're going to look at yesterday and it was, some of them is like, it really doesn't look any different than my high school geometry book. And other ones, you can really see the change in how things are being presented to kids, even if it's a book, you know. And let's start with a problem, a real world problem, and then what would you have to know to be able to do this? Oh, how would you learn how to do that? So a very different way than here's a formula, try it for 100 problems and we'll see, which is what I had to do and we'll see how that works. So it's exciting, they're very excited and I'm looking forward to sharing their recommendation with you in a few months.
Great.
That's great. So I think that's good. Capital projects, they began work this week on the, you know, they got all their other permits and finally actually began work on the building for the stadium, on the concessions, locker room, et cetera building. It's going very well. It has taken away about 20 parking spaces from the students while that building is going on, but they're adjusting to. The new lights are done and in. We've been having, ever since the construction started at the middle school and there were some things that had to be done in the parking lot. There were, somebody severed something, so some of our existing lights weren't working, those have finally been fixed. So we're, you know, getting through all those other parts of the project and the stadium will just be the final little piece that we're working on. It's very exciting. I hope that soon I am bringing to you that last piece for approval, which will be the plan and the bid for building the new seating part, so.
How exciting.
And do you have anything on the Theller Center?
Well, we, I don't have anything to report as far as fixes. Where we are at this point in time is I have some meetings set up with people that we have to meet with to get approval to do any kinds of fixes. We have removed the metal mini bridge that we had put in place about five years ago because with weather this year and with the erosion, it was dangerous. We had talked with Art, Art was going to, it looked like it was going to work, we were going to borrow the bridge or take the bridge, that they didn't need anymore from the Girl Scouts and put a longer bridge there and then there was significantly more erosion and that wasn't going to be big enough. And, you know, unfortunately, our community members, we started with barricades, then we put fencing up with signs on, please don't walk on this way right now, it's dangerous right now, we need to do some work. And folks were choosing to ignore that and climb over the fence and step on the bridge that was kind of hanging there. So we've removed it and we have reopened an older trail that was kind of not being used anymore, kind of adjacent to there. So you can still make a loop, it's just a little bit different now. Our staff went down and did some work to make that more accessible and easy to use and we put some new signage up. And once we meet with WDFW and get, in order to do an emergency fix, it's no, we were told it's no longer the county, it's them that has to approve even an emergency fix. So we have that meeting coming up to see what they will approve and to talk more about their perspective because if we do anything long-term and we could look at doing some grants and things to do some things, we're going to have to work with multiple agencies and we're going to want to talk to community more about what that might look like. So I don't really have any moving forward things to report at this point in time.
It's kind of exciting with the trail moving a little bit for people that, that's really the biggest place that, in this local tight area here where people go every day. So it's different, you know, so it's, I don't know, maybe a good way to look at it.
Well, yeah. I don't know if any of you have been down or a high tide, but where it's washed out, it would be over my head coming through there on a high tide on a 12 or 13. I was down there, I think it was about a 13, one, I was blown away by how much water was moving in and then moving back out again, I had no idea. Because normally if you're out there on a mean tide when there's nothing going on, it doesn't look like much, but there's a heck of a lot of water coming in and it was actually over the Rozell, I actually saw it, over the Rozell Road, right at the base of the trailer park.
Wow.
I'd never seen that before either, I made a point to go out and mother nature is pretty powerful.
Brutal.
Brutal, yeah.
Thank you for that report, very, very cool.
I've been down too and it is a new configuration, a lot of folks coming through on the Rozell Road place and I think that the people that put up the fence are to be applauded, I couldn't get across. I mean, it is well-designed, the bridge is gone, it's well-designed and they got the edges fixed so that it discourages people to try to get across.
That's good.
I was just trying to take a picture, mind you.
Yes, we are. So, community linkage, planning and message of the month. See, that's our district calendar and events and athletics and you can go to that. And our upcoming board letter columnist is Mrs. Bode here for February. And we are on to assurance of organizational performance and policy review. And we... Did we, I thought we already reviewed that. So ER, oh, that's just...
This is where you just decide if you need to make any changes to it.
Yeah, yeah, did anybody have any changes for that ER 5 or 8? Usually I have a computer working and it scroll and it keeps me going. My computer stopped working for no reason at all, so. And then we did a policy change for GP 02 E6 student board member.
And if I may, this is not actually a change, here are some recommendations and some examples because we brought up that we, various board members, including Spencer, brought up with maybe our policy related to student board members needs updating. Rather than making a recommendation and not giving you some of the ideas, we brought forward things from WASA for the board to look at. So maybe the thought would be that you guys have a month or so to look at this, you can make some suggestions to me and then I could draft a potential new GP 6, GP 2 E6 and bring that back to a subsequent board meeting. So really here, it's just kind of, this is what it might look like and what things we might do differently. But to give you guys a few weeks to take a look at that rather than just...
So your thought was, really, we're not going to do anything with it right now?
That's correct.
But I wanted to have discussion. I appreciated that we had three different little looks at some other ones and I appreciated that, you know, of course, having the one that we have. And I had some thoughts and comments, which is, you know, I love having discussion, that's why we have board meetings, aside from to conduct business, this is our chance to talk to ourselves. And what I had found in looking at the other three policies for student board members from other districts and stuff, I was a little uncomfortable with some of the language, a little bit of it. I'm also having a little bit of uncomfortableness with our own. The gist of it comes with student board members voting. Ours says they're allowed to vote, the vote is an advisory vote, but we don't really see them ever voting. I don't know if you ever say aye or nay or whatever, I mean, well, we'd know if he said nay because...
I see him voting, you're just not facing him.
Good, good, good for you. But in any case, it's that whole thing is, I would like, you know, I want to encourage the vote to happen, particularly if I want to hear them if they say no. And I would encourage them to say no, even though it's an advisory thing. Boy, that's an alert to us that we have something that we maybe aren't thinking about. Yeah, if it's a 3-2 vote for the rest of us, his vote won't make any difference, we won't tie it up and it won't top something over, but it'll give us some information. So somehow I'd like to see our policy reflect a greater strength in the input from the school board, the student board members to us somehow. Maybe it's to, I mean, just as a thought, it's to put him in the middle or the student board member in the middle so that, you know, we're more aware of what he's saying or whatever. But I'd also want to hear what the student board members would say too. Otherwise, in the other districts, you know, they had different ways, some of them said, no, absolutely, they can't vote. And others, you know, had a similar thing to ours. But the one thing that I wasn't seeing and what I would like to see, and I'm just one vote member, so here, you guys have to have your stuff and he needs to have his input too. I really liked, and I went with him at this conference to the presentation that, I forget the district name, but it's Carnation, that they had where they have their, a two-year cycle. But the cycle is a person, a student gets onto the board for two years and in that second year, that's when that person is really stepping up and becoming an active, more active with the rest of the board. That first year, a predecessor is training him or mentoring him. And in his second year, his or her second year, he or she is mentoring the other new one that's come on for two years. So a two-year cycle that's staggered, I really liked that idea. I've kind of thought that, he did too, but I, you know, I can't put words in his mouth. But that, they described, from that school district, the kids described, how that really made a big difference. And the school board members there said, yeah, they saw it too in that second year, that person had been mentored and is now the senior, kind of like at Congress, you have the senior and junior senators. The senior person is really going to task and giving the board a whole lot of, you know, stuff. The second one who's now in their first year is kind of more quiet and learning but being mentored. I like that idea, so I didn't see that in the other ones that we got there, but I wanted to bring that up.
It is, and I was at that presentation as well and I really appreciated the two students that presented there. And I feel like our policy should reflect our encouragement of our student representatives to have an opinion, to voice their opinion during the discussion time before we vote and to vote as well, even though it's an advisory vote. But I think that we should be considering the student perspective, especially when it directly affects what happens in the student life in our school district. And also, I think it's important to be able to serve two years because the first year is basically getting to know you and getting to know the process. And I think it's really valuable for students to understand school governance and how that works as a school board. So they are a member of our school board and I believe that they should have the responsibility of helping us make decisions that directly affect them. So yes, I agree with what you're saying. I'm so excited about the student voice forums, I can hardly wait for those to start because I want to go, I want to be at them sometimes if I can. I don't want to hog, but I really, I think that's going to be really valuable for us to hear that.
Definitely.
That's really good, all of that is really good feedback to help draft a new draft for you guys to discuss. We'll bring it up next time.
Okay, all right, and we were at the adjournment phase, announcements and comments from the public. I saw your name on there Dana, but you're not talking and sure.
I just had one, the last graduation that I attended was the one that was here and I really didn't like driving to Kitsap County to see our kids from North Face and graduating and I'd be more than happy to just get back here in Belfair and in our school. So, you know, the concerns that people have, I think it's more important to be in your own building or on your campus to graduate, unless you want to go to the University of Washington or something like that. But that's, it's expensive, it's expensive as the devil and this is their school.
Yeah, yeah.
And then talking about how many, was it, this guy had 38 people?
32.
32. When I graduated, there were 312 in my class and we were told you get four, that's it, you know. If you want to trade them, fine, but 32 is kind of unrealistic in a school district this size. Maybe we can compromise with people that don't have anybody going, but I sure as hell want to be there. I don't have any kids, I've never had any kids at all or in the district, but I like going to graduation anyway. I got to hand out the form this one year when I was on the board. That was kind of cool, I think it was 1976. I probably knew five kids, but that's a fun trip and it should be in our community.
We can always guarantee you a seat if you join the board. Guarantee you a seat if you get elected to the board.
Cindy said if I file, she files, yeah, that's not a bad idea.
Actually, Don, you should have an honorary seat for all the volunteer work you do in this school district, it should have your name on it, so I will propose that.
The plaque on that.
You know, again, I haven't been in practice in about three years now, so there's a lot of kids I don't know. But there's still a lot of kids that I saw as middle school kids, elementary school kids, that I'll recognize the name and it's really good, to me, it's fun to watch them graduate. Recognize they've accomplished it, especially the kids that I was dealing with in some cases, I've been, there's no way this guy's going to even make it past sixth grade and by God, he graduated. That's a cool thing.
And you do have a lot of contact through the Kiwanis in terms of the scholarship committee.
Scholarship committees, yeah.
So you have connections.
See the kids faces of the ones that we have given scholarships to, that's really cool. So I want to have it here, that was one of the reasons why I voted well.
Well, that's what we built it for, right? We built it with all this room and do it. And I think people that are concerned, I think if they open their mind and their hearts and see how it goes. See how it goes, if we mess it all up, then we mess it all up and we go to Plan B, whatever, but I don't think that's going to happen.
It'll be all good.
The last one I was at was in the old gym and it was like 96 degrees. And I spent the entire graduation ceremony helping the EMTs with the people who were passing out.
Oh my gosh.
You know, we had no air conditioning, gym was hot in places and the EMTs must have made about eight or nine trips out of here.
Oh my gosh.
People just didn't survive graduation.
All right, well, we are going to have a wonderful time and we are going to move on to, anybody on the board or superintendent have any other comments?
I do.
All right.
And it's not rebuttal, it's to add too, but it's also in the form of a question to the superintendent and the rest of us. You know, back when we originally were going to have a new stadium in our original whole bond thing, a lot of the thinking was we could do our graduations there. Well, with this remodel, is that, if with the weather cooperates, is that also a possibility?
It's also a possibility. So once we have a new stadium, we could plan for outside and go inside if the weather's poor.
Same place, same, no worries.
Yes.
All right.
That's good to have it, good to have that information out as well.
Yes.
Great. Anybody else?
I distinctly remember the selling point on this with respect to having graduation here. And my strong impression is that is the majority sentiment. So, I mean, I haven't gotten a poll, but I do remember when we were pushing the bond that that was part of our selling thing and I think it'd be, all we have to do is execute this thing very well, as I'm sure it will be done. And I think people will be persuaded because I think it's an additional unity thing when we're able to do something like that in our own community.
Right, all right. So if we have anything else that is on the agenda to talk about, then we are moving on to Mr. Director Whitman to do our board self-assessment.
I did want to say just one quick thing, this is just related to the legislative material. There is this webinar tomorrow from noon to 1:00.
And Dana has given you the material that comes to me. And if you just follow the directions there, you'll be able to sit in and listen to that. And that's, so much of this material I have found is like trying to drink out of a fire hose. There's just so much legislation that's going on. It is useful, particularly the Friday webinars, I've found, to listen to that in a more, um, in a slower, at a slower tempo so that one can absorb what's going on. So I just wanted to mention that that's, you know, that'll be tomorrow and you guys will all have material for how to participate in that if you'd like.
Great.
Okay, I'm not going to do this by reading everything out loud. There's hardly any audience here, although there's a million people that are going to watch this online because we're, we're televised or whatever.
Awesome.
Our first section, general meeting behavior. I am checking as satisfactory for all of the criteria there, which means a well-planned agenda. We followed our agenda, we prepared for it and contributed to the, the meeting. The meeting did not have interruptions or distractions. We deliberated, we definitely did. Participation was balanced, nobody dominated. People listened attentively, members, that is. Work was conducted in an atmosphere of trust and openness and I really like that. When I, when we have those discussions among ourselves, that's my favorite part of a board meeting because this is our only chance to do that. We treat each other with respect and courtesy, so those are all satisfactory in my opinion. The governance principles review, we take action at the policy level. We didn't have any policy to take action at and we're working on one that will take action later on. But, and we review the policy about it. That kind of happens in the agenda with the documents that are given to us. We minimize time spent monitoring past performance. Of course, we did talk a little bit about past stuff this time, having to do with Don and previous, whatever. I'm just making funny here. We dedicate time to reviewing the process. We clarify our priorities, I think we did that well. We follow an annual calendar, which we all know that we do. The board chair helps the board conduct the meeting efficiently. Thank you, Leanna. We spend most of our time deliberating the issues instead of fixing things, which is correct. And we support the superintendent in any reasonable interpretation of our policies. And I checked all these things as yeses despite that we didn't do any policy. So the overall rank is satisfactory. That's it.
Fantastic. All right, so our next board meeting will be February fifteenth at six-thirty in the same place right here. And our meeting is adjourned.
Thanks.